Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 9th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show all members are present. This time I entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion.
From the August 12th, 2009 meeting. Motion by Commissioner Marchand, second by Bob. All in favor?
Nobody's in favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, public comment period. Anybody wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda, please come forward. And you'll have three minutes to speak. Brian, you want to make a quick announcement?
Yes, thank you Chairman. I just wanted to remind the commission and the public about the master plan support committee meeting September 21st at 6:00 PM in this room here. I would encourage all of the commissioners to come. We're going to be presenting scenarios from all the public comments we received throughout August, all the public meetings we had. And they did an overlay and have a good analysis they've done on all those inputs we received from the public. So that'll be September 21st at 6:00 PM in this room. And I encourage the public to come, as well as the commissioners.
Thank you, Brian, and I also encourage everyone to show up. I think the plan is moving along quite well. I was impressed with all the input that we've received to date. So please come and participate in the process. Okay, item number 5A has been removed from the agenda, so item number 5B, Larry Jumerville property, lots 3A1, 3A2, and 3A3. Someone here from Earls and Associates or the owner?
I don't think Earl and Associates are here. That's my property.
All right, you want to come and just, please come up to the podium if you don't mind. Just state your name.
We came before y'all some time ago.
Name, please.
Do what?
State your name, please.
Larry F. Jumerville.
All right, thank you.
Y'all had okayed it. It went to Ricky Babbin, and Ricky Babbin was busy running for office, so he never got around to it. So now we're right back to square one.
All right. Everybody understand that? Commissioners have any questions or comments?
Yeah, what does Mr. Babbin have to do with this? Was he your attorney?
He's my lawyer.
Okay, all right.
All right.
So you're saying he just failed to record it?
Do what?
He just failed to record your...
Right. He was busy politicking.
Thank you.
And he was successful.
Okay, well, there is a comment in the packet about clarification on the existing 40-foot servitude. Has staff, is that...
There's one line that ends, well, it ends ambiguously for the existing access servitude, and it's something that we can clarify with the surveyor. I mean, I just need to talk to him prior to that. The comments went out, this came back, that one wasn't addressed, and so we, I don't know, pending any other issues, then approval based on that condition, then we can address that on the final.
Just on clarification?
Yes.
Is that where it ends, at the 20-foot building's servitude?
Yes. I think it's an issue with the line type that just unfortunately ends with a dash next to that line, so.
Do you know what they're talking about?
No, I'm not even paying attention, really.
Somebody show them what they're talking about on the...
Because if you have any questions, you just bring it up to Buddy O'Gorman. Where's the water? Right here, right here, see? Right here, the road. You talking about the gap right here? If you go back, this is an old map. You've got a $500,000 bridge right here. Okay? And that bridge is way over here. So I have all this furniture on the blacktop road. This is where it used to be, travel road. So this is an outdated map. I don't know where you got that from, but...
From your surveyor.
So I said, Buddy O'Gorman, get over here and get your straight.
And that's part of our question is, we want to make sure we get this resolved, because it's a...
Well, see, what he's talking about, he has a gap there, which he did have a gap way back. That's when Harvey Kling was in charge of all that. Well, he said, "I didn't have enough right of way to build a house." And I said, "I had enough right of way, because the road should have went all the way to the buyer." But that brought into a lot of politics again. Grady Malonson is the one got that bridge put right there, that the parish put way below where a boat couldn't pass. I don't know if you all fishing or not. But anyway, you couldn't get under the bridge, or y'all had to come back and raise the bridge, concrete bridge. For $500,000 y'all got invested, and that'd go no wheres. And that was advertised all over the television, but that doesn't matter. All I'm here for is to see, you should have a different map.
Well, this one is dated, dated 2409. He dated this thing 8/24/09.
8/24/09?
Yes, sir.
Is that the date on your map? That's wrong map. See, this is...
You having a hard time with lawyers and surveyors, aren't you?
I really don't have much time for all this, you know? I can't hold a breath, okay? I'm just trying to give the land away. I don't, it's to my grandkids. That's to Larry George Jumerville, Devon Hamrick, and David Hamrick. Is that what you got on that map?
Right, and Ricky, the point that he's discussing is that toward the canal, right? That's not... It's that little, and I'm trying to understand where you're pointing, that little piece right down there.
We think the issue is more of an autocad issue than a map issue.
Right, right.
Please tell us the map for all of it.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's really no bridge shown there that I can see.
You don't have a concrete bridge on that map?
Nope.
Nope.
I think we need to defer until we can see the accurate map. I mean, I hate to hold you up, but if there's a more up-to-date map out there, we need to see it.
Well, I've got another map at the house, but I'm not going over y'all and coming back. That's for damn sure. What y'all want to do tonight, you tell me, and I'll do it for next meeting, but I'm not doing anything tonight.
Well, I would hope for the next meeting, though, your surveyor would be here to answer a lot of these questions and...
Can you run me off a copy of that map?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we move it to the end of the meeting and see if he shows up? He's running late, apparently. He knows this is on the agenda, and if it doesn't show up, then we defer it until next...
Yeah, I think we can do it. Might look at having the public hearing, too, since probably the notice has been issued. We need to honor that also.
We need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Make a motion to...
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Slime and Mr. Nance to defer this till the end of the meeting. And the opposition, motion carries. Once again, I guess everybody's got the revised agenda, 6A has been pulled from the agenda. Item number seven, public hearing for granting preliminary approval for the following mobile home park site, Powers Trailer RV Park Expansion. Mr. Burst?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name is Jeff Burst, and I'll be representing the Powers RV and Trailer Park. Currently, you'll notice in your packets, it is a existing site of a little over 19 acres. The front 15 and a half or so is already existing as an RV and mobile home park, and we are petitioning and looking to expand to the back 3.85 to 4 acres in the back. In your packets, you'll notice, and we've met with the parish several times to go over some of the issues, that we've gone through the checklist of ordinance requirements. I think we've met all of them. There were some concerns in that we were initially on the August agenda. We pulled back off of that so that we can address a lot of the concerns. We've had subsequent meetings with the staff, and I think all of those have been addressed satisfactorily. And so at this time, I believe that we would like to move forward with approval from the Planning Commission to begin construction plan development documents.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners have any questions, comments?
We had this on our table in front of us when we got here. What's changed on this from our packet?
From 34 to 30 spaces.
Is that the only thing?
The old one had 34 spaces, and now it's 30.
How many trailers are out there presently?
61, ma'am.
And the permit is only for 55? Is that what I understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone, there's a trailer park next to a shed in the back of the property. Is there anyone living in that trailer?
No, sir. That is being stored only, it's not connected to any electricity, water, sewage. It's being stored.
Well, generally, when you store an RV with flat outs, you don't leave them out. You slide them in, and all the jacks are down where it's perfectly level, which I understand if you have a gas refrigerator, but it looks like it could be hooked up in a matter of minutes.
Right, well, it's been stored there for the last couple of years, and it's never been hooked up. I mean, you could certainly, you know, pull them back in.
I don't care about it if they're put in. It's not a good way to store it, though.
It also looks like behind that building, there's already been sites that are existing...
Yes, sir. Those have been removed.
Well, there's no trailers there.
Correct.
But there's, it's permitted for 55.
Yes, sir.
And there's 61 there now, and of course, there's places where there's concrete where trailers have been moved. I mean, if we approved this thing, which would be 55 plus 30, that's 85 trailers, I guess, where do we go if there's 90 trailers on it in a year?
And what he's saying, in the existing part, there's a lot of, not a lot, there's a few slabs and hookups where, you know, the minute you get your permit, you could come back in. You know, what's to prevent y'all from doing that?
Well, currently, and pursuant to an agreement that we do have with the parish staff, what we did was remove the trailers behind the building immediately. Then what we did was not increase the amount on the existing property that as, through attrition, as people left, we would not replace them with. So now all you have are permanent residents there, and pursuant to an agreement with the parish staff, we would not force them out of their homes at this time, that upon successful approval, if that was granted, to construct the back, once that's done, those six would be the first ones to be moved to the back. Then, once that's filled, we would have a completely permitted existing front section that is well within and significantly lower from a capacity and density standpoint than current ordinances allow, but at this time, we would not even put any more there. If ever in the future there was that demand, then we would then go to petition to raise that permitted limit. But, I mean, we've outlined a plan that was discussed back and forth through several meetings with the parish staff and agreed upon by both parties, and we have addressed all those issues and worked towards that end, and we're committed to continuing there.
Staff, do you have a dimension plans, a plan that's actually got dimensions showing where permitted sites are going to, are supposed to occur in that front section?
No, the historic plan that we've got in the file doesn't, isn't dimensioned. It's like most of the trailer parks in the parish, they're pencil-drawn sketches.
And so you don't have anything that's dimensioned, that's got definitive locations for any spots?
No.
And this one will have to go through a development plan process, which means this will have to have dimensions in order to get a permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Have you been out there recently?
I wasn't able to go today or yesterday, relatively recent.
Okay. And this isn't really something that's exactly in front of us, but I'm very concerned about is the sewer hookups on those travel trailers. PVC pipe, fine, duct tape, not so good. And it's everywhere. I would have a hard time going with you on this other thing based on the performance that I've seen on the old park. And I've got one more question. This is, there again, within ordinance. 10 by 50 is the minimum size. I've got a travel trailer in a truck, 48 feet long, eight and a half feet wide. You can't go out your door without getting into the next guy's RV. Y'all might, you might take a look at that. And I realize there's a few small ones out there, but RV, the trailers have gotten bigger.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to do that, that's just an observation.
I think that's a very good comment, but the plan that we have doesn't have any dimensions. So I don't really know how wide, other than the text, I don't know how wide this, the code simply says that's the minimum.
In your packet, you should have a dimensioned scaled plot. Bottom right side.
I got a sample, that's it. Got typical, you know, just doesn't, but by the way, it says that it's 20 by... How deep is it?
In the ordinance, it says that the lot sizes and not necessarily the pads themselves ought to be 30 by 50 centillon...
For the centillon dimension, okay.
Centillon dimensions, 30 by 50. That gives you a lot size for RV spots of 1,500 square feet. Actually, you'll notice what we're proposing in there is actually a little bit more than that. It's 2,125 square feet per lot, just to give them, you know, some extra room. And one of the things that, you know, Mr. Nance addressed one of those concerns, that we did consider that as well.
Again, since we don't, we didn't have a dimension copy, I couldn't tell if there was a 20-foot buffer. Do you have the buffer required?
Yes, ma'am, we do. You're talking about the side and rear 20-foot yard buffer? Yes, ma'am.
Right, I couldn't tell, okay.
And, you know, that goes to the allowing for the larger lot sizes, but, you know, so people can have access to that as opposed to it be, I say access, not full access to it, but some of what you see graphically sticks into that buffer to allow them just that extra lot size. But certainly, we could pull that back into the 1,500 or even somewhere in between there, and we do have that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think as long as there's no RVs in the buffer area, it's probably okay.
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. They all have their individual parking pads and lot dimensions.
And just to confirm, you have an existing permit of 55, and you want 30 additionals for a total of 85 sites?
Actually, if you look at the plan there, I believe it's actually 34 that's shown on there. Now...
The revised one we got says 30.
But the drawing doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that text of 30 came from, but that is, yes, in the, in the planning stage, yes, sir, that's what we've looked at. Now, there's also several other configurations that you could look at, you know, lot angles, size optimization, things like that, as far as maybe not providing the larger lot sizes and providing what's required in the ordinance, you know, things like that could be looked at in the construction drawings, but right now, that's exactly what we're proposing.
Well, is it 30 or 34? Because one is showing 34, and what's on our desk tonight shows 30.
The plot plan right there, fully dimensioned into scale, shows 34 fitting with all the dimensions with the buffer, and that's what we had submitted. I'm not sure what that letter is you were just holding up.
They did September 21st.
Ricky, do you know where...
I don't know what that is.
Where this came from?
I honestly don't know what happened. I think that when we had the initial meeting with the developer, there was this map, and I think in between that time, another map got submitted, and looking at it now, this doesn't look like that map. There was a comment based on that map. It got revised and resubmitted, and once again, this doesn't look like the map that they resubmitted. I believe the difference is there's four additional lots between C6 and C10 that the revised map showed. They had a couple of extra lots that we told them were not going to be allowed, but the difference is the description on the front of the packet you have does not match the map in the packet you have, and I don't believe either of those are correct. I believe the right number is 35 lots, and I believe the right site plan is 35 lots. And the only difference is between C6 and C10, I believe there's supposed to be nine lots as opposed to five. That literally is the only difference, and I'm not sure why the plan isn't in the packet. But when we went through this, there were some other lots shown in some places that we told them that doesn't fly, resubmit it. For whatever reason, it didn't get printed, it didn't get put in your packet, and the memo on the front refers to this plan, and this plan, I'll tell you, isn't right. It's 35 lots.
So basically, we're being asked to approve something that we can't look at.
This, the drawing we have in our package just shows 30.
Right.
No, it shows 34.
The text shows 34.
I'm not sure where the text came from, but your packet should show the 34.
Yeah, it's 30.
But Ricky's just said it's supposed to be 35, so which number is it?
Okay, well, let me actually...
We've gotten three numbers, 30, 34, and 35 now.
Yeah, but I don't have, we don't have a plan that shows 35 either.
Well, and that's just, we've got numbers, we've got numbers flying around. I just want to find out, what's the number that we're supposed to be looking at so they can get the right plat?
If I may, let me make a suggestion. I think if we're going to, I mean, and this is, this is my personal view, if I'm going to, if I'm going to look at this and try to make an intelligent decision, I want to see how your 85, 84, or 89, or 90 lots, whatever the magic number is, how it fits in the entire parcel. I don't just want to see the 30 and continue to have this pre-existing condition that is totally unregulatable, because we don't have any documentation of where the trailers are supposed to be. So I'm not in a position to make a decision, because I'm only seeing part of the picture. I want to see the whole picture. And with that in mind, I don't know if it can be compact next week or not.
Next week?
I mean, next month, excuse me, but I mean, it's, I just don't see how this can move forward. You don't have the whole picture.
So you want, in his submittal, a site plan that depicts all the lots?
All the lots.
Including the existing 55?
Old and new.
Absolutely. I mean, we've got, we've got an existing permit that's in violation, for lack of a better term, and we have no way of making sure for somebody to go back in a cow to make sure that in the existing area, there continues to be a fixed number of trailers. So I'd like to see how they're going to lay out...
Actually, after that meeting that we had, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth, and I think there was a good joint resolution, idea brought up by yourself and Ricky, I think, as well, that of how we would structure that so that you knew, would know is a constant number, and that we've gotten it down, and as far as verification, we've had the inspectors come out on numerous occasions to verify that all was in compliance based on that agreement, and I've had numerous conversations subsequent even with the staff that says, yes, that we've done everything that they have asked and have committed to do that, and that's what we're doing and then moving forward. And also, the commitment is, and Ricky was right, I have the plot that he's talking about with the 35. I don't know why it wasn't included in y'all's packet, but that's the one I'm looking at as well. But the commitment was then to take the 61 and not force the permanent residents out on the street, but that as soon as, if it were granted to move forward with design of construction plans, upon completion of construction, the six that would be over would be the first ones to move to the back, then we would continue then to fill up the back. The front would be maintained at its current, excuse me, at the current permitted 55.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you. That's, you're 100% right.
Right.
I was not in a position, nor am I today, to tell you, you know, to evict a resident, you know, that's not responsible for the situation. What I'm saying to you is, is that I think staff, I think the parish is entitled to a plan that shows where these 55 will, I'm not telling you to move them tomorrow or to evict them, I'm just simply saying, bring us a plan that shows the whole picture, the whole, the whole development. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
And where, and on the plan you bring us, we need to know where the 55 are going to be, because right now, I can see where you could do a shell game on that. There's a lot, there's some concrete slabs out there, there's sewer hookups, there's electrical hookups, you could have one in for two weeks and gone, you know, and y'all be at 62. And I'm not saying they're going to do it, but you could do it.
The point is, we just want a regulatory map, something that we, so then staff can say, this is it, this is what you have approval for, this is where these, whatever the number is. I don't, you know, frankly, whether it's 80 or 90, 61 weigh half a dozen the other, I'm more interested in where are they, so that we have something that can be enforced and regulated over a period of time, and we don't have this, we don't have this problem with yourself or a future owner, or some other poor individual that happens to park his trailer in the wrong place.
But Julio, I understand what you're saying, and I understand why you're saying it, but he's not here for the existing park. He's here for the new part. That's what...
It's all part of the, it's all tied together, though.
It's all part of the same property.
But that's not what we're approving.
But still and all...
Well, they're in violation right now.
I understand, but that's not, that's not, to me, that's not the issue. The issue is the new part they're wanting to add.
Well, the new part that they're wanting to add, we don't have a clarification if it's 30 lots, 35 lots, or 34. So, you know, this shows 30, this shows 35, correct?
Correct.
The map that we have. I mean, it's 34.
30.
30.
And Commissioner, to answer your question...
Y'all have us confused now. The map shows 30. This piece of paper today shows 30, and the package shows 34. So we don't know exactly what...
I understand, Mr. Wells, that sheet of paper in front of you, I don't know what that is or why that was on your desk. I also don't know why the latest map is not in your packet, but I can give you mine if you would just, like, take a look at it, and all it is, is I think one on the end of C.
No, we need time to look at them.
No, I understand.
Our packet needs to be correct.
I'm not going to look at it and make a decision like that.
All right, let me just go ahead.
I just meant the difference from what he's looking at, the 34 to the 35.
Well, that's what I am, too, but I want to look at it and go back out there and check it out.
Okay. And I appreciate what Ms. Sherry's saying, is that there is an existing park, and I understand the issue with the permit, but we're also here to talk about just the preliminary approval, if that, to move forward with the expansion of the existing. We all outlined a game plan to reduce the number, to come into compliance, and these were guidelines that were laid down to us by commission members and the staff.
Now, wait, wait, that is not accurate. You had one commissioner sitting, was for it, one was against it, and I was sitting on the fence. I was there. We did not come to that agreement at all.
All right. Then guidelines outlined to us by the parish staff, and I think that we've complied in, completely, and I think that they would support that and agree to that statement. I would then, and I understand what Mr. Julio's saying, and we can certainly provide you with that and the assurances that you're looking for as well. I would then ask this, that how could we possibly then move forward with preliminary approval today to move forward with the design of construction plans, handing us, delivering to y'all, the updated maps with the existings specifically pinpointed, like Mr. Julio's asking for, and so that those, the level of comfort and those assurances are met?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
We're getting there. Let me go ahead and hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up? to come up and speak on this topic, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please sign in. And then just please state your name when you get up to the podium, please.
My name is Gina Monique Madeire. I go by Monique, just for reference. I am the granddaughter of Odia Malanson, which is the name that was used to notify my family. She just passed recently. And that's one of my concerns, is that the notification was very last minute for our family. And we also only have 30 lots on your website, so we're a little confused as well, just for your information. We have concerns about the park, one being the fire department in Gonzalez has sent you a notice stating that they have given approval for the safety, and on this letter that was located on the website, it states that this property is on the corner of Roddy Road and Weber City. That would be Wisteria Heights. That is not this property. So that was my first red flag of concern. The other things, and I have quite a list, the property currently exceeds the allowed permitted number, which is what you were just discussing, by 15 at least. That was something we were concerned about as well, that they're already not in compliance, so what is to say what might happen with the new park? There are also not adequate setbacks provided in the proposed plans for the proposed sanitary sewer facility. And we felt as well for stalls C01 and A16 because we don't have dimensions, so we really can't see from the looks of the plot that we have, the map here that you have, it looks as though they're not 20 feet. So we had some major concerns about that. The other and next concern is that the proposed project has not proven that it will not increase the stormwater runoff onto our property, which is located on the west side of this property. And she's already had problems with drainage in that area. We've had water come almost all the way to her house before this project. And the calculations didn't take into account the runoff from our property that was going into this drainage ditch. So that was really important, that we have somebody really take a hard look at the drainage, because that is already a problem. The next thing would be that the improvements on the grading work in this ditch, according to the paperwork, are showing that this dirt removal will occur on our west side of the property line, in the ditch, and not their side. We don't know where this dirt is to be stationed. Where will it go once it's removed? And they're again, hindering our drainage. The next thing would be the project should be conditioned to require disposal areas to set back a minimum from 10 foot from our property. It was stated that they were gonna take care of the disposal of trash. Well, there's nothing on this drawing that shows where it's gonna go. Where is it gonna be stored? The next thing is the lighting. We would hope that the lighting would not be direct onto our site. It would be light that could be focused downward and not directed into off-site areas. The proposed fencing was also a concern. It's not really clear where this new fence will appear on, between the two properties.
Okay, yeah, 10 seconds, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Because we have concerns about the property being maintained, that ditch. The parish needs to be able to get in and out to maintain the ditch. We're worried about the flow of the water once the fence is up. Where is the fence once the new ditch is made?
Okay, thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
And do you have any seconds left? You can take one.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Gail Robert. I'm the father of the kids whose grandmother just passed. They've been living next to the power trail for 60 years, and we have had problems before, and problems probably will continue and even get worse unless it's guided and make them adhere to the guidelines that y'all normally do for trailer parks. And we appreciate y'all going forward and make sure that they can comply with the old as well as with the new, because it has been a problem. The fence Monique was alluding to, who's gonna maintain the fence, who's gonna maintain the ditch? Presently, the property line is in the bottom of the ditch. We own halfway down the ditch, and they own halfway down the ditch. That was a problem that existed years back that they adjusted. So you're gonna be digging, how far, how wide, we have no clue, no idea. You only have a six-foot servitude for the ditch, so can you even expand it if you wanted to? Those are all concerns that we just became aware of this week. So I think it would be premature to grant them any permit at this point in time. We would like to have it deferred to another date to give us an opportunity to make sure that they, what they do would be the proper thing. We're not against a trailer park, basically, because it's been there as long as we've been there, or the grandparents have been there. And we'd ask that y'all consider all these things before granting them a permit, proceed.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Okay, no one else. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Burst, do you want to come back and rebuttal, and we'll probably ask you some more questions here? You want to comment on the ditch fence?
Certainly.
Address those, please.
The requirement is a six-foot high minimum solid wood fence, and that's what's being proposed on the rear and sides of the property boundaries. One comment, though, about the garbage was mentioned. If you'll note on, I believe it's sheet three, note six, the developers already provide private individual personal garbage service to each RV and trailer home currently, as opposed to providing communal dumpsters, and that will continue for the expansion of the park as well. So there's no need to provide communal hoppers, and that was one of the questions, and I just want to make sure that that was clear, that individual service is being provided and will continue to be provided for all residents. The drainage ditch was looked at, and we did a drainage impact study. The runoff was looked at, and the existing ditch would have to be cleaned out, not even to the extent that's shown to be proposed, because what's being shown to be proposed can handle a flow of 34 CFS. It's something that is, you know, something along the lines of the 500-year storm. Nothing like that needs to be designed and/or constructed, but we would be willing to do that. If they didn't want us to clear out that half of the servitude, I mean, I guess we wouldn't have to. It would just make for an irregular trapezoidal channel. But, you know, I've discussed it with the staff hydraulic engineer, and the proposed drainage improvements significantly improved the drainage out to that area, and the two natural outfalls. One being on the western boundary of the property flowing eastward along the western boundary flows into the Bayeux Francois as a natural outfall, going the opposite direction. The, its new river is their natural outfall, and there's that ridge right there. So the actual drainage improvements that are being proposed greatly improves the drainage that's out there now, and wouldn't have any additional runoff onto the adjacent properties and parcels.
Okay. I got a que, on the fence, you show the fence on, and I'm looking for your north arrow here. I guess it would be on the north, north side. You show the fence outside the ditch. You're gonna reconstruct that ditch all inside of your new fence? How is that gonna be constructed? You have cross-sections, I see, but then I'm trying to understand where the fence is gonna be and how the geometry works along that property line, if you will.
Right. To construct it all within the property, either it would have to be a dual-ditch system to cover, so a new ditch to cover an extension of the new ditch to cover all of the runoff that's handled by this expansion, or it can be an elongated bottom channel, whereas we would have to have the fence outside of, on one side or the other of the servitude, or something more on the lines of not a solid fence for maintenance purposes. But due in the construction documents, is when we were going to finalize drainage and ditch design based on size of the cover that we needed and optimizing of the channel bottom.
Okay. Sometimes we see that property line, and kind of get that geometry on this little sketch, on the preliminary too, so it kind of helps understand, you know, what you're proposing there.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments, commissioners?
I think I have one more. The sanitary treatment plant that you're showing on this plat, again, there's no north arrow on this plat, so I'm assuming north is up?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Is north up on this plat, the one that...
Relatively.
Okay. So is that treatment plant more than 100 feet from their residence?
I don't know that answer definitively without investigating further. I, let me see.
Let me ask staff also. Ben, that's a requirement in the subdivision ordinance. Would that apply to this?
Barring some other exclusions specifically, I think it would. We can verify something like that during the construction plan, where we have more dimensions on these.
Yes, and the actual proposed site wasn't adjacent to any of the residences on the neighboring properties specifically, you know, for those reasons. I didn't know the exact distances and/or exactly where their residence was to answer, you know, completely, but...
I have a question for either legal or staff. Two years from now, if there's 95 trailers at this park, what enforcement does the parish have, and is there any penalties involved to get it back in compliance?
What we've found through this process is a number of trailer parks in this parish that are not in compliance with their existing license. We sent certified letters to each of those parks informing them that they're not in compliance, and at the end of this month, we're gonna go back out and re-inspect those parks. And if they're not in compliance, we will be sending another letter from his falterman's office that basically says, as you are not in compliance, you're gonna start paying a fine as of a certain date. And it is our goal to make that a six-month cycle. Every six months, we're gonna visit every park in the parish and make sure they're in compliance with their license. It's a daunting task when it hasn't been done for a number of years. The other issue we've encountered is based on existing park sketches, parks have changed their license numbers. One year it's X, and the next number, year it's X plus 5, and the next year it's X minus 2. There's no real accountability, and so what we've done is we've created a spreadsheet that shows what those parks have done over the years. We're gonna grandfather them to their highest number, and we're gonna say, "This is it. You cannot get any more trailers. You cannot put any more spots than this number." And our new fee structure that the council approved a couple of months ago has significantly increased the park fees. We're also talking about changing those fees to make it a per-spot fee, where if you pay less and you're found later to be in violation of that fee that you've paid, there will be a fine associated with it, and that'll be an instantaneous fine, as opposed to a, "Let's give you three months," which is what we've done. Once again, this is something that hasn't been done. Katrina added a heck of a lot of trailers to this parish, and some of those parks are still housing extra trailers. We just haven't gone in and checked them before. We're getting it on a cycle, and it's gonna be a six-month thing. And so by adding a defined site plan to the Powers Trailer Park, that's great. But I tell you, there's about 50 more of them, that we've got a pencil sketch on bum water, a napkin, and it just says 19 spots, and they're randomly placed, and, you know, we've got issues with trailer parks in this parish, and I'll tell you right now, Powers Trailer Park is one of the better ones. I mean, with all the fault that we have found, they're one of the better ones. And so I can't make excuses for why the packets are messed up. We've had a turnover in staff. We've had some crazy issues going on. So, you know, I, you can make your recommendation based on, you know, waiting another month. You can make your recommendation based on what you want to do now, but the staff felt that it was important to not displace homeowner or trailer park dwellers who aren't at fault. And we felt that it was, to give them the opportunity to come forward and speak, and that's what we've done. And once again, I can't make excuses for the packet, but that's, that's pretty much what happened.
All right. Thank you, Ricky. To be commended on getting that, those trailer parks in line, because it's, I can imagine, it's not an easy task. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one more question. Ricky, what is the fine?
We've got a blanket ordinance in our code of ordinances that says, for every offense, we can penalize you up to $500 and/or 30 days in jail. We have sent a number of letters out recently that basically says, "We're gonna start fining you $500," and every time we send it, people come in compliance. We've had a couple now that we're moving to that next stage, that we start to assess how many days, how much that fine's gonna accrue, those sorts of issues. Once again, it's one of those moving targets. The parish hasn't been in the fining business before, and now that we're getting into a point where we're enforcing ordinances that haven't ever been enforced, we're trying to answer those questions on a daily or weekly basis.
Well, I commend you on that. We might want to consider raising the fine now. I mean, I don't know what they get per month, per trailer, but I would think it might be... Can you answer that?
A mobile home pays $250 a month, and RV pays $450.
Okay. So it's a wash on RV?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to divert until we get all the information we're supposed to have.
Okay, you have a motion to defer by Commissioner Nance?
I'll second that motion, but I think for purposes of clarity, I think we owe the applicant a little clarity of what, what we as a commission expect as information. That's an awfully open, you know, and I just think we would need to be specific, and if you don't mind, I'll make some suggestions to you.
Well, the first suggestion, y'all need to get the, City of Gonzalez needs to identify the correct, the correct trailer park. They went out and inspected the wrong trailer park. That's not your fault. It's not our fault. We need a correct plot plan or layout, whatever you want to call it, what your jargon is on that, with however many trailers you're trying to get approved. That's what we need, not, not something that we may or may not be right. The other thing, put a north arrow on there so we can tell which way this thing's facing. I know which way it's facing, but it would be helpful.
When you say the plot plan, are you talking about the entire parcel or just the new parcel? I mean, I, I would, I would like to see the entire parcel, because I think it's beneficial.
I agree. I think then you have something that's enforceable.
You have a document, you know?
But that's a lot of money that you're asking them to spend for something that's not necessary.
It is necessary, because they've been over limit, 61 to 72 over limit, and if you went out there, you can see how it would vary. You know, if they get a bad manager in there, he is gonna load that sucker up.
I understand that. I just think that, I think that is asking for more than what's required.
If this is important to them, as they, as it's being presented to us, then I don't think that's an issue. I don't see a problem with asking for a plot that deals with the entire site, the old plus the new, to give us a more updated document that staff can go by, that whoever goes out and inspects will know what they're looking at. So I don't see it as being a problem. And if that's just part of the cost of doing business, then so be it. That's, that's one of the problems we've had in this parish for a while. We get these old documents. We've had documents that came before the commission that were 20 years old. Now, you realize how much can happen with a piece of property in 20 years? Especially just in the past 10 years. So there's nothing wrong with asking for updated documentation.
That's it.
Yes.
Do you have clarification on these stipulations?
All right.
Um, you asked for an updated, uh, site, updated site plan, I, I understand, but are you asking for something that's more in the lines of full-blown construction documents, where everything is exactly laid out?
No.
Because this was more of a conceptual plan?
Right.
That when you do, uh, lot and size, uh, optimization, when you move into design and, and construction documents, which is, I think, much more full-blown, um, you know, then we'll know, you know, 34, 35, and it's exactly at this location and everything. I understand pinpointing the existing, but on the proposed expansion, whether...
Just the number.
Sir?
Just, just the number of plots, uh, of sites. You know, thi- this one might be longer or shorter.
Right.
I just want the correct number that you're asking for.
I believe what Commissioner Julio is, is asking for is the front section.
I, I, I'm currently with him on that.
Okay, you were, okay.
I'm talking about on the expanded part, is that we're talking, you know, 34, 35, you know, it, potentially based on ordinance configuration, size, dimensions, maybe 36 or 30 acres of it, maybe it's only 30, the, the 35 you have shown here, and all I'm saying is that we presented this as this fits based on all the geometry and the guidelines of size that was laid out in the ordinance. Now, when we go back and fully do a design for full-blown construction documents, you know, that may af- actually subtract one and/or be able potentially to add two.
But then you're gonna have to come back to it.
But you're saying you wanna know the exact number now.
No. That's not the way it works.
Well, when you, when you come out of here with your approval, you're gonna have a side plan...
It's for the exact number.
No, you're gonna have a side plan that's gonna prove you a number.
Okay, and that's what I'm getting at.
That's the number.
That's the only clarification I was looking for. Okay.
Because the number of trailers, whether it's 85, or 89, or 90, you know, we need to resolve that now, so you can go to construction and you don't find yourself coming back over here, say, oh, oops, it doesn't fit.
Okay, no, I'm with you, that's why I wanted to clarify what the stipulation was on the, the expanded part, and I understand what you were saying with the existing. Okay.
All right.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Julio Dumas, to defer for 30 days to get clarification on the, the number of sites, and to have the correct trailer park inspected, and to add a north arrow to the, uh, to the plans.
And a corrected by letter.
In a what?
Corrected by lateral.
Yeah, right, right, that's what I'm saying, the corrected inspection letter.
I'm opposed.
All right? Okay, okay, and all opposed?
Me.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Just, Ms. Commissioners Lyman. Okay, uh, just come back in 30 days, if you want, 30 days be enough?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number 8A, petition for designation of an industrial area CF Industries, Inc. Someone here to present that to us? Nobody here for that item. All right, I guess the protocol is we notify them and then issue all the notices and fees one more time, correct? Everybody comfortable with that? All right. Would defer it for 30 days, uh, notice and charges are in effect again?
Need to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Motion to do that.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries to defer item 8A for 30 days? Yeah, I got it down here in the bottom. Committee reports. Subdivision Ordinance Committee.
Okay. You have, you received some information, and I think, um, Brian had emailed it to everyone before the meeting. Um, this is some information that we've been working on, on these simple divisions, and we're continuing to work on it. Both of the committees are working on this, the zoning and the subdivision committees, and I'll give, um, Ricky a chance to talk on this in a minute, but, um, I do wanna say that our next meeting is gonna be the 26th, excuse me, the 28th, at 6:00 PM. Um, and then we wanted to invite any surveyors, engineers, and the public to attend this, and if anyone has anything they might wanna add. And then, as far as this, we need, we'd like everyone to look at it for the next month. We'd like a motion tonight to bring it to public hearing next month, so that'll give you a month to look over it, get us any comments, and we'll make any changes we need to make.
Any questions by commissioners? Okay, do I have a motion to put this on the agenda? For next month, I have a motion by Commissioner Nance, actually coming from a committee, do we need a?
I don't think we need a.
I don't think we need a.
No.
First and second. I think it's already coming out of committee.
Okay, we've always done it that way, though.
Yeah, you're right, I'll second.
Yeah, you need it.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lyman.
Way to stay with it. All right, any opposition? Motion carries.
And I think Ricky wanted to say something.
The other thing that we're working on, um, based on what we sort of talked about last month at the, the, the meeting regarding servitude widths, is we're gonna start working on codifying some standards for the acceptance of roads into the public maintenance system. And we think that if we can get some standards that we all like, and we can get the council to agree to those standards, then at that point, we can start talking about reducing private servitude widths in such a way that we don't require a family partition to have a 50-foot private servitude into their lots, because we're never gonna make that a public road. We're never going to hard-surface that road. Why do we care if it's 50 feet wide, if we can develop a standard that the fire department's happy with, that we can get school buses and fire department trucks and stuff turned around? We don't necessarily need a 50 or a 60-foot private servitude, uh, to serve four family lots or a simple division. Uh, so that's where we're moving in that general direction, but the first step is to figure out what our standards are for accepting roads into the public's maintenance system that we think we can, um, get some council approval on, which is not gonna be an easy
All right, thank you. Strategic planning, do we have anything from strategic planning? All right, we'll return to item number 5B, Larry Jumanville property. Did anyone from Earls show up? Mr. Juman? Nope. Well, you're on again, and come on up.
Well, boys, can you put your next one and get all this crap straightened out?
Absolutely.
I love your honesty.
Motion to defer for 30 days.
Second.
Motion to defer for 30 days to, so we can get that correct map. By Julio Dumas, seconded by Bob Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. See you next month.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Old business, uh, item 10A, status update on the preliminary plat approvals.
Um, this is a little bit of cleanup on, on some old business. The code requires staff to update you guys on any preliminary plats that fail to begin construction within a 24-month period following that approval. Um, we are currently working on creating a tracking system and, and getting some of the old stuff in there, these popped up as being past that, uh, that cutoff.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any questions by any commissioners? Okay, item number 11.
Motion.
Motion. Any opposition? We're adjourned. Okay, we'll convene in 10 minutes for zoning.